Speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in an individual, without notice, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. So as we begin the meeting, the invocation will be given by Minister Kenneth Hardy with St. Paul Bethel Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Heavenly God, our Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for this blessed day. We thank you, Lord, for this meeting. We thank you, Lord, for all those who are sitting on the panel, who are chosen leaders for our community. We thank you for all those who are a part of this meeting, those in the gallery, and those who are virtually. We pray that you will give us the Spirit of peace. We pray that the leadership will lean not on their own understanding, but continue to pray and look unto you for guidance. We pray for our city. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Can we now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Davis is excused. Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Present.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President Niskoski?
Present.
And President McBride is excused.
Thank you. There is no report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. There is no special business, and there is no reports from the city offices. At this time, there is also no business under the Committee of the Whole, so if there's any members here for any of the following bills, they've been continued at the following dates. Bill 1622 was continued to July 25th. Bill 1722 was continued to July 25th. And Bill 2322 was continued until August the 8th. As far as bills on third reading, there are no bills on third reading this evening. 1622 was continued. 1722 was continued. And 2322 was tabled until August the 8th. And Bill 2422 was tabled until August the 8th. So that would move us into Resolutions. We did have a couple of resolutions at this time. Resolution 2231 is continued until July the 25th. And Resolution 2232 was tabled indefinitely, but can be heard in committee on August the 8th. So we're going to move to bills on first reading. So Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 3122 a first reading?
Yes. 3122, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for a property located at 14 Sherman Avenue, Councilmanic District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 3122 to the Board of Zoning Appeals for public hearing on August the 1st, and Z and A Committee and Council for public hearing and third reading on August the 18th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 3222 a first reading?
3222, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 316 North Olive Street, Councilmanic District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 32-22 to the Board of Zoning Appeals for public hearing on August the 1st, and a Z and A Committee and Council for public hearing and third reading on August the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's passed. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 33-22 a first reading?
3322, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1908 East Coward Street, Councilmanic District Number Three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to send Bill 3322 to the Board of Zoning Appeals for public hearing on August 1st, and Z and A Committee and Council for public hearing and third reading on August the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has passed. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 3422 a first reading?
3422, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 2, Article 1, Sections 2-12A and 2.21.1.2B, 3, and 4 of the South Bend Municipal Code to change the residency restriction of the youth advisory council members.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 3422 to Residential Neighborhoods Committee for public hearing and third reading on July 25th. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has passed. That will conclude all of our bills for first reading. At this point, we're going to move on to our unfinished business. And at this time, we have unfinished business with McSweeney versus the Historical Preservation Committee, Appeal of Denial of Certificate of Appropriate, Number 2022-0223. At this time, Attorney Palmer, would you please explain the procedure for this appeal?
This is an appeal from the denial by the Historical Preservation Committee of a certificate appropriateness to make changes in a residential structure. The process for this appeal will be the petitioner will have a maximum of 20 minutes to present her case and shall address specific issues under review, her position, and any relevant witness statements, if any, and the request of action which the petitioner is asking the council to take. The attorney for the Historic Preservation Commission will have 20 minutes to include statement of position by the HPC, again, relevant witness statements, if any, and finally requested action which the HPC is seeking the council to take. The petitioner will then have a maximum of five minutes for rebuttal. Council will be then given 15 minutes collectively to ask questions. This would constitute the public hearing of the appeal. And then the Common Council will make a decision after a motion to either affirm the decision of the HPC or reverse the decision of the HPC. In order to reverse, the council must determine that the HPC's decision was arbitrary, capricious, an abuse of discretion, or otherwise not in accordance with applicable law, contrary to constitutional right, power, privilege, or immunity, in excess of statutory jurisdiction, authority, limitations, or statutory rights, without observance of procedures required by applicable law and ordinance, or unsupported by substantial evidence. Each council member will have the opportunity to comment before a motion and disposition of the appeal.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from council members on the procedures? Okay, if not, then I will ask the petitioner to come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Attorney Palmer, will you be keeping time?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Joyelle McSweeney, and I live at 628 Park Avenue in South Bend.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. So, members of the council, thank you for hearing my petition today. My name is Joyelle McSweeney, and that's my husband in the back, Johannes, with our little boy, Othello, who is three. Councilmembers, I am not a lawyer. I'm a homeowner. I've never done this before, and I may make a few mistakes, but my biggest determination is not to let my little boy down, and to provide a safe, habitable home for him and for all the children who may live in this home for years to come. I come to you because I live in the Chapin Park Historic District, where I've lived for about 10 years. We love our house and our neighborhood, and we plan to be there for decades to come. Last October, when he was two and a half, our little boy was hospitalized for respiratory distress. A screening turned up elevated levels of lead in his blood. By mandate, the County Board of Health was informed, and then they mandated an investigation into our home, and they found elevated lead throughout our home, and particularly elevated in the case of six windows, including two in our dining room and four in our upstairs bedroom where our kids watch TV with us. Lead, as you know, is a deadly neurotoxin, whose adverse effects on young children are lifelong and well documented. It is for this reason that pediatricians screen young children for lead. Per the CDC, once lead is found in a young child's blood, the source of lead and exposure must be identified and removed. Yet despite our persistent efforts to work with the Historic Preservation Commission since February, consulting them, inviting them, inviting their staff into our home, revising our application to meet their preferred materials, they have arbitrarily and capriciously denied our application to replace those six windows in our house with the most elevated lead levels, thus delaying our lead abatement project. And I want to stress, we're doing all this other stuff, mulching, changing paint out, working exterior paint, interior paint, like, all that's on the table, and in just the case of these six out of some 30 windows, the level is so elevated that we wish to replace the windows, that's what the contractor has recommended, and we're being blocked from doing so. We did not receive a certificate of appropriate for those six windows, and that's held up the whole project and only started this week, nine months after his initial lead screening. I ask that you observe that this is a hardship posed by our child's ongoing potential lead exposure, and we ask that you reverse the HPC, that's the Historical Preservation Commission's denial, and allow the replacement of these six windows to move forward in order to ensure the safest possible environment for our son. Councilmembers, as we go back and forth with the lawyer for the historic commission tonight, and remember, I'm not a lawyer, I ask you to remember two numbers. The first number is six. Six windows out of approximately 30 is why this entire conversation is happening. Just six windows, two of which aren't even visible from the street. And the other number is nine. Nine months since Othello's elevated lead screening. Nine months of uncertainty about possible lifelong deleterious effects from ongoing exposure. And for at least three of those nine months delay are a direct result of this committee's arbitrary decision to deny our application. Six windows, nine months, and counting. Now, I want to reiterate, our goal was and is to work with the historic commission to abate the lead and maintain a safe environment while preserving the historic character of our home. This is why we approached the commission, invited the community liaison into our home. Our original proposal, which was prepared by a reputable lead-licensed environmental services firm, Green Tree, which has many contracts with the city of South Bend, and whose name we received from the County Board of Health when they found lead in our home, it was on a list of possible firms, and we called several, and this is the one that was able to provide us with this bid. Our original proposal was to replace these six windows with vinyl windows. When the community liaison kindly advised us that vinyl was generally found to be unacceptable in a historical district, but that the committee had in the past approved wood-clad aluminum windows, we rewrote our proposal, this time using acceptable, or what had previously been found acceptable in other homes, wood-clad aluminum windows. This increased the cost of our abatement by more than $10,000. We took out a HELOC loan to be ready to pay for it when the time came. We haven't used the loan because of this denial. And we were willing to take on that cost to meet the preferences of the historical commission and to maintain the historical character of our home, and still they denied our application. We ensured and assured them that the window appearance would resemble the original, which is the standard laid out in the guidelines, resemble the original, and still they denied our application. Why? Nowhere in the 65-page document that their lawyer prepared for you is the reason for rejecting this material that their own staff member had specified as having been approved in the past been explained. I would put it to you that an unexplained decision inconsistent with established precedent is an arbitrary decision. That's the literal definition of arbitrary. And that is the standard that the lawyer just presented us with, that is the first standard for reversing this decision. Now, both the lawyer for the Historic Preservation Commission and myself have cited three points that our historical guidelines require the members of the committee to consider in deciding whether to grant these certificates of appropriatenesses. The first has to do with historical appropriateness of the alteration. In my opinion, and you'll have to tell me or ask me more about it, by taking the advice of the historical commission's own liaison and resubmitting our application to use a previously approved material, and by ensuring that the replacement will resemble the original, which is the standard specified in the guidelines, we satisfied the first point. The second point is not up for debate in either of our briefs. But the third point is something I want you to pay special attention to and really think about it, and tell me what you think and ask me questions, too. The third point holds that the committee must consider the potential hardship that the denial of a certificate of appropriateness would cause an applicant, and the exact language is in both of our petitions, so we both know about it. Hardship. Members of the council, the denial of our application has caused us an ongoing undeniable hardship, and it is arbitrary of the committee not to follow their own guidelines and take into consideration the severity of this hardship, a positive lead screening, an elevated lead screening, and grant our certificate of appropriateness so that this small portion of the work can be undertaken, these six windows. The hardship of our child's lead exposure and knowing there's lead throughout her home has prevented us as parents from enjoying or resting easily in our own home, knowing that our child is safe. For nine months, we have not been able to appropriately address the lead in our home, and we remain in uncertainty over the ramifications of this ongoing exposure on his IQ, coordination, behavior, and ability to succeed at school and later in life, which I'm sure you are all well aware, as well educated people in the Midwest, are the undeniable consequences of lead exposure in children under six. This is a three-year-old child, two and a half when first diagnosed with elevated lead. This is a psychological hardship on ourselves and a medical hardship to Othello, potentially. I feel that the language that their lawyer quotes here to claim that they have considered this hardship is actually dismissive, dismissive of the long-term potential damage done by lead and the enormity of that damage. I'll read the remarks, the minutes of the historical commission that they included with denial here. I provide them in full in exhibit N of my documents, and I note that their lawyer has left out the most egregiously dismissive remarks. The remarks of the commissioners are as follows. So there were commissioners who gave remarks, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Commissioners who mentioned my son's lead problem, 3. What did they have to say? Commissioner Andrews, and I don't know if he's in this room, I have no these people, I don't have any animus towards them, I just think they made a mistake. Commissioner Andrews, "I am concerned that his child has lead poisoning. This is not the outcome any of us want, but this is what we've been tasked to do based on the standards and guidelines. In this case, I think he missed the third guideline about the hardship clause. I think it's there for a reason for situations like this one." Commissioner Stahlheim, "I vote to deny on the grounds that there are other ways to acquire lead remediation," and this person concludes, "this could set a dangerous precedent for historic properties with replacing windows on the basis of lead paint. So this dangerous precedent is I come to you with an official elevated lead screening and a report from the County Board of Health, and you tell me that I'm somehow using this to replace six windows in my home and a big paranoid setup on the Historical Preservation Committee? I don't know how else to interpret the phrase 'dangerous precedent' here. But I know that what is dangerous is ongoing unremediated exposure to lead." And finally, kindly, this person says, "I vote aye because there are other options, but in the well-being of the child, I would like to help with the list of other options." But I don't think these are serious enough, and 50% of the members, to make sort of offhanded acknowledgements and move on. This is not something that Othello is going to be able to move on from. That's what lead exposure is. Somebody needs to take action. That's us, and we're willing to spend the money. We've done the research. We took out the loan, we're ready to go, and we're waiting. In these remarks, they brushed aside the health of my son with a phrase and a wave of the hand. "Would you want your child or grandchild's health and future dismissed this way as a dangerous precedent? Is a child's future worth less than six windows? If they grasp the degree of danger caused by ongoing lead exposure, it's their responsibility to follow Point 3 of their own guidelines, recognize that this is a hardship, and allow us to fully address the lead in our home." Now, the final point I want to make is that the lawyer and the members of the committee continually and vaguely claim that we have not explored all the options for addressing the lead in our home. Specifically, they suggest in some places, and right in the weeds of this report, that if we can, instead of replacing these six windows, we should have them removed and restored. There's the debate among the various people we spoke to about whether that's possible or whether the glass will fall out, et cetera, what will happen. In a perfect world, we might agree that removing them and restoring them is something to pursue, but we don't live in a perfect world. We live in South Bend, Indiana, and we cannot find an appropriately licensed firm to do the work in a timely manner. First, we cannot find a window restoration firm who also has a lead license to perform the work. The committee suggests that we work with a firmer individual who does not have a lead license, but who just knows how to do lead-safe work. But we want to make sure this work is done correctly and in the safest manner for the safety of both our children and for the children in the longest term, and we do want to work with someone that was on the County Board of Health's list. And also, we're going to have a follow-up lead investigation from the County Board of Health, so we need to know this work is done to their standards, and we want to work with someone with a lead license, and we want to exceed the standard there. Moreover, we want an appropriately licensed lead firm because when you remediate lead, you can release dust and other byproducts that actually further the contamination. You need somebody who knows what they're doing, and people lose their lead license over not doing that sort of thing. Secondly, we cannot find a firm to do a work in a timely manner. Although the historical commission's lawyer implies we have not fully explored such options, we have sought multiple bids for the restoration of the current windows, including as recently as last week. We're still working on it here. We want to take action. We're not obsessed with one thing or another. We need something that works and is timely, because this child cannot be exposed to more lead at this age. Alicia Fiazell, who formerly was a member of the Historical Preservation Committee staff and now works for HD Chrisman Construction, came to our house and inspected the windows, and we requested a bid for the removal and restoration that they described, and she replied by email, quote, "While I am empathetic to the fact that you need this work to be completed as soon as available opportunity, our team is quite small, having only two carpenters. We have a backlog of projects in our queue at this time that extends into the next year. For this reason, I will expectively pass on providing an estimate in this time. If anything changes, I will get back to you with an estimate." Members of the council, this inordinate delay truly represents a danger and hardship, a hardship which the guidelines of the Historical Preservation Committee were actually designed to accommodate, Point 3 of what they're supposed to consider, but which they have apparently arbitrarily chosen not to. Othello has waited nine months for a safe home. He cannot wait until he's four and a half. There's other things I could tell you about this email, and I brought it if you want to see it. Ms. Fiazell, again, a former staff member of the historical commission, concurred that the aluminum clad windows can be an acceptable substitute if they are insured to resemble the original, which is the standard of the historical commission. She noted that the current, and this is a new piece of information, but she noted that the current street view appearance of the house is actually not the original windows, but a nonoriginal storm window, and that if we remove it and replace it with these that resemble the original will actually increase the historical accuracy of the street view of our home. There's an irony for you, and I have copies of her email here if you would like to consult it. And perhaps it actually will allow the members of the historical commission to rest a little more easily that all we want is a safer house that preserves the historical character of this house. In closing, I am not a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm happy to answer questions, correct anything I might have gotten wrong, but any plain reading of the guidelines shows that our modest proposal to replace the six most lead-shedding windows meets the standard of the guidelines. Not only has the historical commission approved wood-clad aluminum windows in the past, but the commission had the leeway to approve our application as it stands according to their own hardship provision, and that, given our child's lead exposure, further delay represents an ongoing severe, potentially deleterious hardship. The choice not to grant us the hardship consideration, which is actually written into their own guidelines, is arbitrary and capricious. Members of the council, I ask that you reverse their denial and grant our application to move forward with the project and make our home lead-safe. We are only asking to replace six windows. This is an urgent matter, both for the safety and well-being of our son Othello and for any child who may come to live in this house in the future. Far from being a dangerous precedent to want to repair and restore our own house, our desire to make our home lead-safe while maintaining its historical character is a commitment to the safety and habitability of this neighborhood and our home for years to come. In this sense, it reflects our ongoing sincere commitment to the safety of our home and the character of our neighborhood into the future, a goal we share with the members of the Historical Preservation Commission, and I'm sure with you members of the council. So, members, please grant our prefer relief, reverse the commission's denial of a certificate of appropriateness so that this lead abatement project, which has only been undertaken this week, we finally began with just the things that are not on the table tonight, we want to be able to see it through to its completion and not have to wait till Othello is four and a half years old, two years from his original diagnosis. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments and your explanation. Attorney Palmer, do we go into, hear the HPC first before the questions?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. The HPC wants to approach, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council members. I'm Christina Shakur, attorney representing the Historic Preservation Commission with offices on the 12th floor of this building. Tonight, you've heard from Ms. McSweeney, who owns property with Mr. Goransson. Before I begin, I'd like to remind the council, does not rehear the case. That was before HPC. Council determines whether the actions of HPC were arbitrary, capricious, an abuse of discretion, or otherwise not in accordance with applicable law, as you heard, contrary to constitutional right, power, privilege, or immunity, in excess of statutory jurisdiction, authority, limitations, or statutory right, without observance of procedures required by applicable law and ordinance, or unsupported by substantial evidence. Under the city's municipal ordinance, HPC must consider three factors, as was mentioned, when determining whether a certificate of appropriateness is aligned with the standards and guidelines for Chapin Park. Appropriateness of the proposed construction, reconstruction, alteration, demolition, or moving to the preservation of the historic landmark specifically and/or the Historic Preservation District generally. The detriment to the public welfare if the proposed construction, reconstruction, alteration, demolition, or moving is permitted even though it's not deemed appropriate, and the potential hardship that the denial of certificate of appropriateness would cause the applicant. Appellant raised the following three issues in their position statement, that the HPC's decision was unreasonable and the windows have deteriorated beyond repair. The HPC did not consider the hardship elevated lead levels of a child have caused to the appellant, and the HPC does not understand the lead abatement requirements laid out by St. Joseph County Health Department. I'll address each of these issues, and then I'll turn the podium over to Adam Toring, the Historic Preservation Administrator, for a discussion on the state of the original wood windows that are the subject of this appeal. The windows are not deteriorated beyond repair. The property is listed as outstanding for its architectural significance to Chapin Park Local Historic District and the city as a whole, which is taken into consideration for decisions. HPC was given the authority by council to work with the neighborhood to establish standards and guidelines for Chapin Park, which it did. They wanted to save original windows where possible, so the standard for windows is that original windows and doors shall be retained unless deteriorated beyond repair. And I provided a picture of the windows. So this is a picture of the house, and then the other picture is also another view of the house to show you the architectural design, and then there should be a third picture of the, two of the windows that are in question. So this is the picture of two of the windows. Both appellant's contractor, Green Tree, and city staff explained to the appellant that the windows could be removed, restored, and ultimately reinstalled. They pointed to Green Tree's February 22nd letter to them and said, "This demonstrates that they must be replaced." However, it states, "You cannot use encapsulation," which is enclosure of the components, "on friction, impact surfaces." It's not an option. Replacement is an option, and/or removing windows, taking them off-site, and chemically stripping the paint, then replacing the windows, painting or staining them. So Green Tree clearly stated there is an So Green Tree clearly stated there's an option to remove and strip the windows off-site and then replace them in the original location. However, Green Tree does not provide window restoration services, as explained by their representative to the HPC. It's just not something they do, so their recommendation is always to replace the windows. Mr. Toring, who did an in-home inspection and took the photo, will explain his expertise and opinion on the windows. The HPC did not, did consider the hardship of the appellant's three-year-old child in making their decision, and for that reason requested additional information and took additional time with a special meeting to fully analyze the issues and evidence prior to making a decision. Some of the HPC members expressed their dislike for the situation throughout the meeting and in their votes for the denial of the certificate of appropriateness. As previously quoted, Commissioner Andrews specifically stated, "I'm concerned that this child has lead poisoning. This is not the outcome that any of us want, but this is what we have been tasked with to do based on the standards and guidelines." She is not here this evening, but wanted to express that she is a homeowner in a historic home with children and definitely understands the significance of this issue. Commissioner Tiffany stated that there are other options, but in the well-being of the child, I'd like to speak to help with a list of other options. So they spent two meetings taking it very seriously exactly because of the lead exposure. The discussion included this hardship throughout the entirety of both over 50 minutes at two different meetings. In addition, as discussed at the two HPC meetings held on this matter, appellants had chosen to encapsulate other areas of their home containing lead. By doing so, lead will remain in the home that will eventually need to be addressed at a later date. Were they to restore the windows, they would be left with lower lead levels than other problem areas in appellant's home and would not need to be addressed in the future. That would be the hope. Staff, in order to assist appellant in finding a contractor, provided them with a list of contractors who might be available and attempted, and have tried to work with them in the future. The HPC understands the lead abatement requirements laid out by St. Joseph County Health Department. Appellants claims they were required to have work completed by a lead-licensed firm and that none are available to perform the restoration. Abatement procedures would require a licensed abatement contractor. However, restoration only requires that work be done using lead-safe practices, and it's lawful for the appellant to have the windows restored and then tested by the St. Joseph County Health Department to ensure that the levels of lead are now safe. This is evident in the letter from the St. Joseph County Health Department, which provides options for dealing with lead-based windows in the homes. For these windows at issue, they provided the option of either interim controls or abatement. It also states, "The rules recognize that some renovation, repair, remodeling, landscaping, operation, maintenance, or other activities are not conducted for the express, which are not conducted for the express purpose of hazard remediation. In general, lead remediation rules do not apply with those activities, even though they may incidentally result in a reduction or elimination of lead paint, lead-based paint hazards. Moreover, the requirement to use lead-safe practices still applies to these activities. The deterioration that was mentioned in the report regarding the windows is chipped or peeled paint and not the components of the windows." The outcome of this ruling does have consequences to the precedent for historic properties moving forward. It's undeniable that the properties falling under the jurisdiction of HPC all have lead in them. However, there are solutions to prevent lead from danger, being dangerous, other than replacement. As seen in the rest of the abatement project for this property, one solution is encapsulation or enclosure of the components. Another is removal of the windows, stripping of the paint, and staining/painting the windows or openings. After this is done, a property owner could have the property retested to certify that the lead levels are now safe. I'll hand over to Mr. Toring.
Hello, everyone. I'm Adam Toring, the Historic Preservation Administrator, staff to the Historic Preservation Commission, along with my colleague Ross Van Overberg here in the crowd. Our offices are on the 14th floor of the county city building with the Department of Community Investment. The house with this window replacement project is within the Chapin Park Local Historic District established by the passage of an ordinance by the Common Council in 2005. Local designation, again, requires that any changes to the exterior of the structure be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. This district is the city's largest historic district, comprising some nearly 300 properties. Much of this neighborhood, including this house, is also on the National Register of Historic Places as part of the Chapin Park National Register District. The National Register District, or pardon me, the National Register of Historic Places is the federal government's way of coordinating and supporting public and private efforts to identify, evaluate, and protect America's historic and archaeological resources. Properties included on the National Register of Historic Places are surveyed and given a rating when they are going through the review process for inclusion. The four ratings are non-contributing, contributing, notable, and outstanding. The vast majority of structures receive contributing ratings. Fewer still receive notable ratings, while even less are considered outstanding, examples based upon their architectural or historical significance. This structure is one of approximately 30 properties within the Chapin Park neighborhood rated outstanding, the federal government's highest rating. When properties are reviewed for inclusion, they are considered based upon age and integrity and significance. Age reflects how old a building is. Significance relates to who lived there or what happened at that location, who the architect was, the architectural style. Integrity is a reflection of how unaltered the structure is from its original configuration. Changes to the exterior, including modifications like window replacement, can negatively impact the rating of a structure. In addition to acting as staff to the Historic Preservation Commission for their monthly meetings and reviewing projects, Ross and I also provide preservation advice, historic research, and we teach hands-on workshops to the public and other city departments on best practices for preservation, including lead-safe practices. Staff have been involved with the Lead Affinity Group since the fall of 2017, where Dr. Heidi Bidinger Burnett at Notre Dame, the St. Joseph County Health Department, and the NNN have done an excellent job to bring attention to the hazards of lead-based paints. In June of 2018, the City of South Bend Sustainability Team paid for me to attend a professional training session on the hazards of asbestos, lead-based paints, and crystalline silicates, all of which are regularly present in historic structures. Earlier this year, staff gave two talks on the construction, maintenance, and operation of historic wood windows at the St. Joseph County Public Library and spent considerable time discussing how homeowners can address lead-based paints safely and confidently. Attendance was strong, and we were planning to host additional sessions of this class later this year and then annually going forward. In addition, staff attended a conference this year on lead remediation hosted by the University of Notre Dame. On March 18, I did conduct a site visit to this property to meet with the homeowners to discuss the project, as well as assess the condition of the windows, which you see on the screen. I inspected the windows in the dining room of the house, which are these two windows. The existing windows, from my assessment, are in excellent shape. They are in serviceable condition and do need maintenance. That's a rope that's hanging down that's maintenance, but are not deteriorated beyond repair based upon the way we look at these windows. Following the Historic Preservation Commission's initial review of this project, I spoke with representative from Green Tree on the phone about their operations and remediation processes. That's when we talked about what they do and how they do it. Staff also met with representatives from the Health Department regarding the project, as well as the lead remediation generally, to discuss the range of potential ways that their office advises homeowners on how to make their home lead-safe while taking cost and project time into consideration. There is a range of options available to homeowners with this. It's not just absolute replacement. Thank you.
So, the HPC followed the standards and guidelines for Chapin Park in this case, which state the original windows and doors shall be retained and restored. The windows have not, in the opinion of city staff, as you just heard, deteriorated beyond repair. And for those reasons, we request that the Common Council affirm the denial. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and your comments. So at this time, we'll come back to the Council for questions?
No, we have the five-minute rebuttal period.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. There is a five-minute rebuttal.
I'm grateful to the Council from the Historical Commission, and I'm grateful for Adam coming today. I do respect his expertise and the efforts he's taken to learn about this process and think about ways it can be integrated into the Chapin Park community and the homeowners thereof. However, all these things are wonderful. His expertise is wonderful, and this is a great photo of my dining room. You can see the chip paint, for example. This is about a foot from our table. And right now, we're just trying to keep the windows closed and the baby away from the window until this is resolved, perhaps in the springtime, when he's four and a half years old. All of this is to say that all these things are wonderful when no child is at risk, when you're rehabbing a property because of your love for the property, or when you're educating yourself about processes for restoring historical windows. But when a child is at risk, as Adam kindly referred to in his last remarks, you do have to balance different factors. For some people, that's money. We ran to the bank and got that loan, so for us, it's not money. For us, it's time, and what time means in terms of exposure to this child. It's also time in the other direction in keeping this house as habitable as it can be, so that it can be a family house, a place people live, and a living community into the future. So that's one point I would make. Like, who are you preserving this building for? Also, if I can't find anyone to do this work, and I mean, I'm not going to learn how to restore historical windows before, like, in the time it takes to save this child from a neurotoxin, okay? I'm an English professor. I'm a writer. That's what I am, you know? I'm not going to be able to teach myself to do this with two sessions at the library and then just do it and save my child from brain damage. And, okay, that sounds like a joke, but if you read the headlines from towns and cities all over our Michiana, it's not a joke, okay? It's not a small consideration for me. And if, as Adam says, there's a reason to think about balancing historical preservation with the money it might cost for some people, with the time it might take to get the repaired them, well, this is one of those situations. And in terms of the precedent that's being set, I would gladly, when this is all done and a happy, happy memory, sit down with Adam, with people from the Board of Health, with people from the Notre Dame's Lead Project, whoever it needs to be, and think about, what could some of those formularies be, so it's less of a mystery? You know, less of a mystery for people like me. We don't lose all this time educating ourselves because we have guidelines and, like, even some kind of equation that we can plug things in and come to the best understanding, instead of this, like, kind of jousting situation. I don't want to be in competition or disagreement with Adam. I want his help, but I also need a solution that's going to work in the immediate-as-possible term. An immediate-as-possible is already three months delayed by the denial. So I don't think he's in bad faith. I don't think anyone's in bad faith, but I think there's a real disagreement here, and I think there needs to be better procedures. We can address the precedent that way. We don't have to address whether this is a dangerous precedent with my son's health, okay? We can all commit to doing better. I don't see why a boy who has already waited nine months should have to wait another year and a half so that we can do the kind of artisanal art project that is being suggested here. As much as I would love to have those skills, I know it's not going to happen for me. I'll be happy to be part of a committee that works towards developing those skills for others, whatever is best. And finally, in terms of a list of contractors being provided to us who can do the work, as I said, we've contacted people. The names that were presented to us were people who had already given us a quote to replace every window in this house. That's why we rejected it, because we don't want anything sweeping like that. We're doing encapsulation where we feel like the windows are in good enough shape to stand up to that, and we're asking to replace the ones that our contractor has told us need to be replaced. And we have gone to other contractors who can't do the work for the year and a half, and that is a hardship. That's the hardship. And all these wordplay about whether the County Board of Health allows or permits working with someone who has a license or not, would you want your grandchild to be in a house where somebody just was like, "Well, I don't have the license, but I have the skills, so I'll just go for it," you know? Our child was harmed by a carpenter who was not taking proper precautions. That's how he ended up in the hospital. That's how it started the whole thing. I have nothing against that person. We're not here to discuss that person. But of course, you want the person with the most training to do the work, and you want to have some proof that they have it. That's what a license is. So I don't think, like, calling, you know, playing niceties over who has a license and who has training and who doesn't have training but is very safe is the way we want to proceed. I understand Adam's expertise, and I value it. I think it's an asset to our community. And being, moving forward, I'd be happy to be part of any community board that works to sort of create some flow charts, like, oh, no, your child tested positive. What should you do first? What are some things that are going to happen six weeks and six months from now, so that people don't go through what we went through? But we've gone through enough.
One minute, ma'am.
That's it.
We now go back to the Council for a collective 15 minutes of question and answer with the petitioner and the HPC.
Okay, Council members, do you have questions? We want to start. Councilwoman Hammond, do you have any questions? We could start with you if you don't mind.
So many pieces of paper. The first question, and I don't have the document right in front of me, but part of this packet explained the legal requirements when a home is sold, and that by law, it should have been identified that lead paint is a potential hazard. I wish I had that piece of paper in front of me. So I'm wondering, you've been there 10 years. Was there such a study? Did you, were you warned? Was there a document presented to you to identify the lead risks in this home? Because as I read that document, it seems to me that that is required by law.
I don't know anything about it. If there was something, I didn't see it, I'd be happy to revisit that paperwork, but I will say I moved in with, like, a five-year-old and a three-year-old, so it's not something I would have taken lightly. I think it's more likely that nobody tested for the lead in the home, because I think people are kind of whistling past the graveyard. In our case, we had a county mandated investigation because the child's blood came up first positive, and then we did the investigation and found the lead. So now, we're required to disclose it, and we're required to show that it's been mediated, and we want to do it, obviously. We're not looking to sell right now. But if I heard the Council correctly, if this is a problem in all the houses in the historic district, it's something serious to think about, you know? But I have no memory of seeing that paperwork. Maybe the others know, but I don't.
It also states that if testing had not been done, then there should have been documentation that they are not aware of what the lead threat...
It could have been something like that somewhere in the, you know, the 400 pieces of paper you get when you buy a house, and, yeah.
So you're not aware?
I'm not aware of it. But I'm guessing it's something like that, because I didn't know about it. I didn't know there was lead all through the, I saw that my house was painted, and I didn't understand the degree of the problem that we had.
Okay. Second question on Exhibit D from Green Tree. They state that they cannot guarantee, due to the age of the windows, that there are not broken pieces and that the windows will hold together to be allowed to be. Is that your understanding?
Actually, yes. And this contractor that I just spoke to, Alicia Fiesel, repeated that. She said that we would have to count on the fact that the glass was going to break, the panes themselves would break when this was taken out, that it happens in, like, 70% of cases of windows this age. So that's my impression from speaking to a second contractor, and that was a contractor who was formerly on the staff of the Historical Commission.
Okay. And I do have a couple of questions. Good evening. Yeah. So I have an email here, Exhibit E, from Wednesday, February 23. And, Adam, I believe this is from you, according to the document. It says, "I see that the contractor has proposed vinyl replacement windows for this project. Have you or they considered other window manufacturers with different materials? As a word of caution, the Commission has not typically considered vinyl replacement."
Correct.
Not typically. So have they?
There have been cases where vinyl windows have been approved. Yes.
Okay.
I would also say that in the case of this neighborhood, which was established as a district in 2005, there are already vinyl windows in this neighborhood that predated the establishment of the historic district, that I routinely approve vinyl windows to replace vinyl windows in those cases.
Okay, thank you. And do you allow any replacement?
Yes, it does happen.
It does happen. So would that be vinyl or aluminum?
The preference would be for a product that lasts as long as possible. I'm administratively approving replacement of vinyl windows that were installed less than 10 years ago. So for the sake of the property owner, I try and get them to move towards a product that will last as long as possible, both as an investment and for the duration of the house. house. Aluminum clad windows have a longer lifespan. That's why I suggested to the property owner that they look at that product. In the cases where we have approved projects, there was recently one about two months ago, Ross and I did a site visit and put our hand through the condition of the window. Like, the sash, what you're seeing here, was so rotted that I could just push my hand through it. To me, that's deteriorated beyond repair.
I just have two more questions. Have you found that other properties needing repairs, such as this done, in your historic districts, are finding it difficult to find contractors to do this work currently?
That's a problem, one, just generally with contractors right now, availability. It's very competitive to get contractors to do any work, whether it's masonry repair, roof repair. To do historic preservation work, to restore windows, is a very unique skill set. Green Tree does not do window restoration. Getting more contractors is something that I spend a lot of time thinking about, how we can do that. Getting more contractors to be Lead Safe certified, also something I spend a lot of time thinking about. I'd love to see more contractors. I don't have an exact number of the number of contractors that are operating in St. Joseph County right now through the Building Department. I talked to the Deputy Building Commissioner earlier today. It's in the thousands, and we have a handful of Lead Safe certified contractors locally. So yes, we need more contractors, we need more specialized contractors, we need more Lead Safe certified contractors.
Okay, so my final question, you alluded to the fact that they didn't need to be Lead Safe certified. Do they, or do they not, for this particular job?
So based off of our reading and understanding from the Health Department and just conversations, one, they can, there are interim measures that can be done. Four, if your intention is purely abatement, the, it does say they have to be lead abatement certified, licensed. If you're rehabbing the home and renovating the windows, where the, incidentally, it becomes zero lead on the window, that has to be Lead Safe practices. And so, again, Lead Safe practices versus, you know, maybe someone didn't take those necessary steps, that there's a difference there.
Thank you. Councilman Wax.
Thank you. Adam, going to the same email. When you suggested considering fiberglass windows, was it your belief at the time that replacement would be appropriate?
Having not seen the windows, I didn't get to do a site visit until later. This was just after a phone call with the property owner, and then the email with the application. So having not seen them, I was just going off of the premise of replacement. Based upon that, I would recommend going towards aluminum clad or a fiberglass if the windows were determined to be deteriorated beyond repair.
So it wasn't a replace or restore question at that time? It was restore what would be the preference?
I'm always going to advocate for restoring the original windows.
And so, would you reject the appellant's contention that finding a restoration company to do it would take into next year?
Some of my early correspondence, knowing that they wanted a Lead Safe certified contractor, I pointed them towards a group out of Michigan who they did have conversations with. I knew that they were excited about it. I believe that's one of the emails that's included, or is, it's referred to in one of the emails. I don't know what their timeframe is, but as I said, contractors are pushing out long-term.
So, and I guess this would be for Michigan Core, if the, when the plan calls for restoration, that it must be restored when that's feasible, how would you, how do you weigh that when there isn't practical ability to have them restored? Me personally, I don't think having the homeowner have them required to do it themselves. I don't think that's viable. So if they can't find somebody to do that, how do you weigh that with they must do that?
If you look in further at the report, there are interim measures that are also recommended while, in the meantime, that would also prevent lower the lead exposure that this county department would approve.
Thank you.
Councilman Warner.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of on the path that Mr. Wax is, you know, we can't, we can't reweigh the evidence here, we're not making a new decision. I'm struggling a little bit with, with the time period and the hardship, and whether the feasibility. Can you go into a little more detail into those alternatives? Because they all meant, you know, the HPC mentions the options, and really what those options were, and was that something feasibly realistic, I guess, is where I'm going?
Yes, so Adam had more conversation with the Health Department than I did. It's my understanding that they are realistic for encapsulation. You know, if you ceased use of windows for the time being, if they were encapsulated. But again, I'm not necessarily an expert on it, I just had, you know, was reading through into the report and what the statute required, but Adam had the conversation with the Health Department.
I'm going to make this comment, like, a painted shut window that is fully painted is an encapsulated window. That is then a, if it's a bedroom, that's a fire hazard, but a encapsulated window, fully encapsulated, is a safe window. So in the extreme case, you could seal this window completely shut with paint, and that would be a safe interim control. It's maybe not what I would recommend, but it's an immediate solution that involves paint.
Vice President Lee Scottsky. There is about three minutes left in the council's question and answer session. You may want to entertain a motion to waive that 15-minute limit.
So moved.
Okay, there's been a motion to waive the 15 minutes, and it's been duly seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Attorney Palmer. Councilman Lee.
All right. With my, I have my two questions. Question number one, what's, what's considered a hardship? And would you consider a child having high levels of lead exposure a hardship?
It's a wonderful question. Absolutely, considering, hearing, like, a sick child, it's an emergency circumstance, you want to address that, and that's what they're trying to do. They put forth a proposal for one option for these six windows, and the commission reviewed that proposal and denied it, with the understanding that there are other options I don't know if that answers the question. I believe there is concern, and that was felt by all the commission members, for the health of the child.
And then, if you have approved vinyl windows before, is there a way to approve this as an exception because of the hardship, so it doesn't create the precedent where everybody does what they want to do, but because of this special situation and not being able to have people, to be able to remediate it quickly, because of the child having a high level, is there a way to approve that as a special exemption or situation, so that it doesn't create this precedent where everybody can do whatever they want to do?
Staff writes the recommendation, and my recommendation is always going to be for restoring the windows, based upon what I have learned and what I'm seeing for the longevity of the product. And I see that as, if you can find the contractor, and if you can do the work yourself, or those other options, you can get the result that is a preservation result. The commission could feasibly make that determination, but they did not in this case.
And, and the fact, and the fact that they, they have the money to do what needs to be done, I mean, a lot of times, people don't have the money. And, you know, when it comes down to a child being sick, and these high lead, lead exposure to a child, I mean, to me, and the fact that, you know, it's hard getting people to come in and do the work, that, that, to me, says it's a hardship, and the fact that they've gone through this. And if vinyl windows have been approved, I would, I would think that the, the way to go is to make this a special condition because of the child being, having high level. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan.
Thank you. Many of my questions have been addressed, but I, I do have, just for clarification, once again, we're not here to, to retry this case. Could you just say a little bit more? I was getting confused about when you were talking about having approved vinyl windows. Those were in cases where there were already vinyl windows.
Correct. That's when I've been approving them, correct.
Okay. And then, also, just for information, this may or may not be germane to people's decisions, but I, the, dust is, lead paint is dangerous in, when, in friction cases where there is dust. So options, remediation options are wetting down paint continuously, wiping it down with wet cloth, encapsulating, as you said, with paint, chipped paint. In having taught workshops on Lead Safe practices, how many hours would you estimate one window would take?
So I'm, I'm going to say this, I'm a historian, but I've been learning to do this myself, me doing a window. I can extract a window safely and cleanly in about an hour and a half. Then I take it off-site and clean it. It takes time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman White.
Okay, thank you as well. I'd like to thank both Historical Preservation and also the homeowner as well. This is a very challenging situation, because as we begin to look at what is considered to be a hardship, we see it from different lens. And we, you know, when you begin to look at that we're dealing with a child who has already tested high levels, and then if you, one of the recommendations was to, that all the windows could be painted and sealed, well, that's not going to go, because that's a safety issue. And so the question becomes, how do we collectively address the hardship, and what that means, and interpretation of that? But also, for me, the main concern is that child and that home. This council has spent, I would say, about a year or so, dealing with lead and trying to come up with ways in which we can begin to work with our residents, but also with the focus of safety for our children, and also anyone living in those environments. And we do know, historically, there's certain areas within our community, based on the age of the home, will have these issues. But now that we are aware that we have a young child that has been tested high levels, then how do we respond to that? And secondly, you know, when the homeowners are doing all that they can, and as you have indicated, it's difficult finding contractors anywhere, you know? And so, again, it's kind of awkward position to be in. So I just wanted to make those statements, and a number of questions that I had have already been addressed by my former council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Myself, as Councilwoman White has alluded to, I've been working at the Lead for about two years now, as I'm sure you're, you are aware, in getting out information to residents about how dollars that are available, if their child is tested. I just got an update from July 1st, from Indiana lowers the threshold for blood lead levels in children, as I'm sure you are aware of, and that was House Enrolled Act 1313, which takes effect in January of 2023, which is actually more consistent with the CDC of lowering those elevated blood levels to five. Her child, I believe, is at seven. And that, that's a high blood lead level. When I was looking through all these materials, and I went through all the materials, the one thing, the friction surfaces, I believe they talk about encapsulation is not an option for friction surfaces. And during the rest of my reading, I, I seen where there has also been some other work that has been granted and done there, that demonstrates the willingness for them to go by the guidelines for the historic district that they live in. So I guess my first thing is the friction surfaces, how you said, well, you can paint them shut, but it's also recommended not for encapsulation, so I'm kind of confused on that statement.
I'm not going to, to question Green Tree's, like, execution for what they were proposing. The comment I'll make is that these windows have an aluminum T-track or metal T-track system, which creates an interlocking weather stripping. It's not visible here, it's actually, if you see the little weird dangly rope thing, it's behind that and along the channel, which is the jam where the window is, that actually minimizes the friction surfaces already present. There is lead paint all over this, like, you can see it. You couldn't, as I, I posited that earlier, as an option, that is not what I would recommend to anybody, but that would create a Lead Safe space. If you want an operable window, you're going to have a friction surface, so you need to remove that paint in some way outside of that replacement.
My other question is, it was brought up by Mrs., or Ms. Sweeney, are those windows original to the house?
So the comment from Alicia Fiesel, I believe, is talking about the storm windows, which is an exterior window on the outside of the window. That's to create an insulatory barrier between the outside and the inside. You can see it actually in this picture, if you're looking, you see the little plus icon to zoom in, there's a dark shadow behind that. That's the storm window on the outside of the, the window. Those are probably not original to the house. So I think that's what Alicia was referencing, is that you could replace the storm windows and have a better, more historically appropriate storm window on the, on the house.
And then the materials that you would approve were the aluminum clad with the, that would basically bring it back to looking pretty much the same as what the windows are on there now. And that is an approved material, other than the vinyl, which I understand why that would not be as, as appealing. And their life consistency is about 10 years, well, depending on what you could, I guess you could say 15, but is the, is the aluminum ones just as acceptable, if not more, rather than her having to wait a year and a half to try and get a contractor while she's worried sick about this elevated, elevated blood level that her child has?
Correct. The, the part that I'll add to that is the lead time on product, if they're custom ordered windows, is at this point, in some cases, 200 days. So time for installation of a new product, if it's not already ordered, is going to be nearly a year from now. Just throwing that out there. So these are the concerns that staff think about. We had a project that came before the commission in December of last year, pardon me, November of last year, that the commission approved, these were going to be new windows in a new addition to a structure. Those windows ended up having a nearly year time, year lead time on delivery. The applicant came back and asked for a different window, and the commission approved that different window because of lead time. So fully understand that, that time for projects is significant. Restoration, it could be a year out, yes. New product could still be a year out.
And the last thing I'll just comment is, this, this is a hard, looking at, you know, I've been two years working with, about children, and, and their, it's blood, their poison. That, that's the bottom line, there's no other delicate way, you know, to put it. You know, behavior problems, slow growth development, nausea, nervous system, brain development, it is just, it's terrible. nausea, nervous system, brain development. It is just, it's terrible. And 82.1% of the homes in the city of South Bend have some type of lead in the home that were built before 1978. And I see that it looks like they've taken every measure to try and come to a consensus with you on, on, on trying to do something to help her child. And I'm sure that the hardship that they have going to sleep every night, wondering if they're doing everything they can to protect their child. It's, it's a very difficult, because I, I, your work is, of course, preservation and keeping these homes, and that's very important. And, and I honor, you know, you, or, you know, appreciate your work that you're doing in the community for that. But I think the health of a child is a whole nother matter. So thank you for coming for us today.
We now go back to council for any comments before entertaining a motion to either accept or either affirm the HPC decision or reverse the HPC decision.
Can I ask just one follow-up question to the, the panel? Yeah.
I'm sorry, could I just sneak in the mic so I can hear you? Sorry, I have hearing aids.
Forgive me. Do you have an idea of what the lead time might be on those replacements?
No, but I know if I hadn't had to delay for 90 days waiting for this hearing, that would carve 90 days out of a 200-day lead time. No, I don't know. And in fact, I will add that I had to wait to start any of our abatement because, like all contractors, our contractor didn't want to start until he knew what the plan was, until we finally persuaded him to put us on his books because we kept missing his deadlines. So I don't know yet. Sounds like I got bad news waiting for me either way. But, you know, I'll put the order in if I can get it in because right now I have nothing else, nothing. I don't have a contractor who's agreed to work with me because they have so much work, more work than they can do. So it might have to be that, you know? But if I hadn't spent three months waiting, and I do appreciate that it took the time it needed to take to get to this meeting, but it's a lot of time and an atmosphere that we've been discussing.
Thank you.
Any other statements by council members? Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, I do have that document in front of me. The Federal Residential Lead-Based Paint Hazard Reduction Act is what requires notification to homeowners. I am very curious to know if the Historical Preservation Group speaks to new home buyers in your historic districts and speaks to them, and them about this particular issue. As was identified, there's a mountain of paper that you get when you buy a home. It may not be something in the forefront of your mind, but I do think that based on the prevalence of lead in these historic homes, that it would be strongly advised that the Preservation Society does have these conversations, especially with families that are moving in with small children.
Unfortunately, I'm often the last person to know when a new house is purchased by a family. Like, we don't have any way of knowing when there's going to be a transaction for a property. So that process is happening before I'm in the equation at all. If a real estate agent or a seller, and I would say the state of Indiana has set certain things in my understanding of sales of homes, that that has to be disclosed. But I'm not involved in the sale of homes in any way.
It's a federal law.
I, I'm agreeing with you, but I'm not involved in the sale of homes in any way.
Thank you.
Any other council members like to make a statement before?
Yes. I'm struggling with this. As was mentioned multiple times, our, our body here, the council, as the body that hears this appeal, is not to decide how they would rule if they weren't in the position of the Historical Commission. At the same time, there's this avenue for appeal, and there are certain aspects to consider, appeal based on. And I don't, let's see if I actually... So it's either arbitrary, capricious, and also to be considered is observing their procedures. The HPC clearly, the, the guidelines clearly state that when windows in this neighborhood are able to be restored, that they shall be restored. That's unequivocal. It does not give an option to replace if they are able to be restored. Where I struggle here is if there are a dearth of providers and it is not clear that someone can restore the windows, telling somebody that they have to wait indefinitely, that's not one of the options there. It's either can you restore it? If not, it could be replaced. Telling somebody that you could restore it at a later time, if and when you could find the contractor to do that, that, to me, does not sound like the window that could be restored. I, I haven't made up my mind yet. I'm open to hearing what other council members say. It's, you know, the appeal, like I said, is not to second guess, but at the same time, with somebody that's in a real difficult position where they're trying to do something expediently, and they're being told that they have to restore it when they can't, even if they want to, I, I just don't know how that's following their own procedures.
Are there any other council members that would like to make a statement? Councilwoman, Councilman Lee?
I'm, I'm, I agree with Councilman Wax. We don't want to make, we, we don't want to make a decision that's going to open up Pandora's box and change the way that the Historic Preservation does their job. But also, there are cases where you have to make some exceptions because of the situation. It would even be a little more different if the child didn't have the high levels of lead. It'd be different if we didn't understand the problems that come along with having high levels of lead for a child. So that's why I was asking if there can be a special exception made where it does not open up the Pandora's Box. But in this case, because it met hardship requirements, because they are doing everything that they can, and they went and got the money so that they could buy the windows and, and all of that, and because we're post-pandemic and it's a supply chain issue and contractor issue, there's a lot of circumstances that's out of their hands. But every day, they gotta worry, is my house killing my child? And we can't raise our kids. What else is there? That's my statement.
So were there other comments down there?
Are there any other comments? Councilwoman, Tomas Morgan?
As you've heard from other council members, this is a, this is a challenging decision. Lead poisoning is a serious threat to the health of children, and it is everywhere in our community. I too have, um, I understand the, the seriousness of it and have joined other council members to push for continued education across the community and, uh, education of citizens to help to abate lead in their home. It is challenging. There's lots of obstacles to that. Time is certainly that, cost, for sure. I, uh, I don't know what the situation is with homeowners on the council. I, I live in a home that was built in 1903. I'm sorry, 18. Now I'm losing track. In, in 1903. And I understand clearly the dangers of lead poisoning and lead in old homes, having raised two children in our home. I moved into our home on Chapin Street with a newborn baby and a five-year-old. I did know, we were purchasing that home with lead in it because of the year that it was built. So I knew that there was lead in it, and inspectors are required to disclose whether there is lead in there or there's, they have no knowledge that there's lead in there. So it concerns me that you didn't have that information or, or, um, somehow that wasn't available to you or, um, wasn't able to find that or read over that in, in documents when you're building your home. It, for my family, it was something we took seriously. And in the bedrooms that we had, our children were the rooms that we renovated first. We did get training in lead safe work practices and sought the consult of many in our community who have done that safely. I, after having worked on many windows in my home, I can turn that, turn windows around in a weekend, again, with the consult and help of, of others who have done this in our community. So it's, there's, I see the options available that could even be faster than waiting for replacement windows. And keeping your, your family safe, we've had to struggle with that and, and do that ourselves. This is just difficult because it just is, you know, a lot of people can't afford replacement windows. We could not. 60 windows in our home. And, yeah. I, I just wanted to share that, my own personal experience there and can see all sides of this.
Councilwoman White?
Okay, wow. I'm saying wow. I would want to say that as any appeals that comes before the council, they're gonna be different. And we are looking at this appeal based on whether it, the findings of the Historical Preservation, if their findings should, you know, remain or should we look at not, you know, upholding the finding. The homeowner has, in my opinion, operated in good faith. 90 days has passed. Information about her home, it appears that it was not given, and the Historical Preservation has indicated it's not their responsibility because they're not selling the homes, which means we got some gaps that we as a council can look at to ensure, and working with the realtors, that this information, if they are living or moving into an older home, there's some things that they need to look at as well. You know, she's living in a home that she loves. She has, her family, they have invested in that home. They do not want to move. And the issue of hardship, as I said earlier, it's an issue of interpretation. What is the hardship? And what does it mean to each individual? And how should it be interpreted? Also by this council as well. Lead poisoning is real. And we, again, as a council, we've made this one of, one of our priorities, ensuring that this community is well-educated, they have the resources, but also the support to move forward to ensure that they're living in safe homes. And most importantly, that the children are living in a safe home as well. So it's a tough issue, but I just want to make those statements. Each appeal that comes before us, we're looking at them individually based on the areas that we have responsibilities to review, and then we need to make a decision.
Thank you, Councilwoman White. I appreciate your words. I appreciate words from all the council members. Councilman Warner?
Yeah, I think I'm ready now. As, as, Mr. Wax kind of, a couple of people referred to this, but as attorneys, we're taught to always kind of break things down into steps and elements. And so, so number one, as Mr. Wax said, original windows and doors per the, the requirements of the HPC shall be retained unless they are deteriorated beyond repair. Okay, so that's, that's where we start with the guide. We're here not to reweigh or re-decide this, but to look at the decision of the HPC. The decision of the HPC was that the, the windows had not deteriorated. That doesn't seem to be in dispute by anybody here. I, I think even the, the one contractor agreed that they could be restored. They just didn't do that. They had stated. However, the HPC also in its decision kind of analyzed options and brought that in as, as they were options here. So then it becomes our guiding criteria when we analyze this, as Mr. Wax pointed out, is five kind of steps. Is it arbitrary and capricious? Is really the, generally the one that applies the most in most situations, although Mr. Wax did point out that there's another one here. This is, this isn't unconstitutional, or there's no excess of statutory jurisdiction, potentially not in accordance with procedures. So for me, it really comes down to the options. And I, I think we've heard that any kind of replacement is going to require a great deal of time. There are options besides replacement. I too have been in a 100-plus-year-old house a few times now. And, you know, there are other options to, to deal with this and mitigate it until replacement can happen. And so I, I think reasonably there, they made the decision based on options. And I, I think it wasn't arbitrary or capricious to make that based on other available options that were available. So that's kind of my thought process on it.
Okay, I think everybody has had an opportunity to make a, a statement, ask their questions. For myself, I can just kind of, can take in everybody's point of view actually on this. It's in writing on, on what you've seen. You cited it based on the rules that you have. Then you have a mother that is concerned about the health of her child because her child is lead poisoned. I was looking through these quotes and seeing aluminum clad windows, which I believe was an acceptable form, and dated on March the 4th, it said 148 days was a production time. That was then. I don't know what that may be now. But it is a very difficult decision when you're talking about a child. I really don't have anything else to add. I think everybody else has pretty much said, said it all, really. So at this time, I guess we come to... So at this time, I guess we come to the motion?
Correct. Motion would be either to affirm the decision of the HPC or to reverse the decision of the HPC.
Is there any council member that would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to affirm the decision of the HPC.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, there's a motion and it's been seconded. At this time, Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll call?
Point of order. So again, because we're, so a vote of A affirms the motion.
The motion to, it's a motion to affirm on the floor.
Okay.
So if there are four votes to affirm, that's, that's the decision of the council.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Does anybody else need clarification? Okay.
The motion was to affirm the HPC decision?
The motion was to affirm the HPC decision made by Councilwoman Warner and it was seconded by Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan. And it does recall, it does call for a roll call vote. So Clerk Jones could, is that correct?
It does call for a roll call vote. I believe that Councilmember Hammond seconded the motion.
No.
No, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I misheard.
I think it was Councilwoman Morgan. Morgan seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misheard.
That's okay.
Councilman, Councilmember White?
Nay.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Nay.
Vice President Nizgatsky?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Nay.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
We have four nays, three ayes.
There now needs to be a motion to reverse the decision of the HPC.
I'd like to make a motion that we reverse the decision of the HPC.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's been duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
We have six ayes.
The decision is then, is now reversed.
So the council has reversed, reversed the decision of the HPC. I'd like to thank all the parties for coming tonight for the hearing. Okay. Just let me get my stuff together here. Yes. Okay, moving on, is there any new business to come before the council? If not, Councilman Lee?
I would just like to say that on this Thursday at 1:00, I'm sorry, this Thursday at 1:00, we'll have the opportunity, the ambassador to the U.S. from Kenya will be in town and we'll have the opportunity to meet him at 1:00.
Okay. And I'm looking forward to that. And I would just like to make an announcement. The Prairie View Apartments is having a fun day, which is going to be having police, police department, fire department, people involved in the community. The save team is going to be there as well. It's going to be from 12 to 2. They wanted to find some activities to do for the kids there at the apartments. So if anybody would like to stop by, please feel free to, to stop by. Okay, is there any other new business? If not, we're going to move on to the privilege of the floor. So before we move to that, I would like to read a statement. Disrespectful, rude, or disrupted speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any persons, may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted times. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals shall not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review and topics shall be responded to at the next council meeting. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak under the privilege of the floor?
Sharon Benicki, South Bend, Indiana. I'm not giving my exact address tonight and you'll understand why in a little bit. I want to start out with, last week I took my grandson to Kennedy Park. We went on Tuesday. It was a blast. And while we were there, there was a busload of kids that came in from the MLK summer camp. And while I was looking at my little one thinking our days are numbered on his coming here, I watched this bus full of pre-teen to teenage kids come into that splash pool, which is no more than 18 inches deep, having a blast. So I do have a concern though, because after three hours of walking back and forth through this pool, we did notice that there are some soft spots on the ground. I just hope that the city has the money and the means to maintain this pool and keep it up and running, especially in light of the fact that Potawatomi just had to be shut down because it wasn't maintained. And I would hate to lose this asset to the far west side of South Bend because it's obvious that not only do the little kids enjoy it, but the big kids do too, which just tickled my heart to see these teenagers splashing and playing and having a good time. My next thing is not as pleasant. I live on the far west side, as most of you know, in the 6th district. In the last four days, there have been five massive shootings in my area. It started last Tuesday morning at 1:00 a.m. There was a house on Illinois Street shot up. At 3:30 a.m., there was a house on Ford Street shot up. At 9:00 p.m. in the evening, in broad daylight, there was actually a shootout on Ford Street. On Friday night, there was a shooting, and I don't know if you call it a shooting or what, they, the police stopped counting at 48 casings on Albert and Ford. And then a couple hours later, there was another shooting on Edison and Ford. I was sitting out on my front porch and this is what I got to hear. And mind you, this is only a 20-second clip and it only clicked on because I got up to run into the house. There was no less than 10 kids on one side of the street and probably five on the other side, and I was stuck in the middle. I do have video that if you'd like to see the actual video, I will show you. I won't share it with you. I wish I had the answer. I don't have it. It was 9:00 o'clock at night. It was sunny. Thank God, not all the kids were outside running around and playing and carrying on because it could have been a lot worse. Nobody was hit. I don't know why or how, but something, you know, I talked to Isaac Hunt this afternoon. He's besides himself, obviously living in the middle of a war zone. I'm beside myself. The police have been phenomenal. They've been parking their cars, you know, either in front of my house, in front of the house that has the problem, on the side street. The gentleman that lives right across from me, his house actually got caught in the crossfire. He ended up with a bullet above his head and below his head while he was sleeping in bed and he just thanks the good Lord that it went above and below and not in between. Like I said, the police have been phenomenal. They've been out there. They've made their presence felt, but I don't know what the answer is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Jason Benicki, also far west side of South Bend. And she missed one shooting, by the way. There was also one on Bella Vista Street down on Illinois. So don't, you know, we don't want to underestimate, there have been six between Tuesday and Friday. There's no doubt in my mind, and there's no doubt in anybody, that this is absolute gang warfare right now. I applaud the police officers. They've responded quickly and promptly every time. They have been professional. They have increased their presence as much as they can, but obviously that's not enough because it started Tuesday, they've continued shooting all the way through Friday. And luckily, we've got a 48-hour break right now, but I highly doubt that's the end of this at this point. They've been professional. They've cut, like she said, they've driven through slowly. They've stopped, they've talked to different neighbors just to make their presence felt and get, you know, a feel for the neighborhood the best they can. And we know they're understaffed to, to an unnumerable level. But it's beyond time for them to have a fully dedicated gang task force on that police department, not a special crimes unit that has to bounce here and there, focus on house break-ins and car thefts and, and then gang activity or drug activity when they can. The city has a problem and it is time for a gang task force. And there's no doubt in my mind that's what's needed to fix this problem because, you know, you heard the light caliber ammunition they were shooting Tuesday during the day. Tuesday at 3:30 was high caliber ammunition. You know, as somebody who owns guns, shoots guns, you know, I know the difference readily. I'm willing to bet that it was no less than 50 caliber ammunition being used Tuesday at 3:30 in the morning. It was that loud when I'm in a basement and I can hear it that clearly.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Benicki.
Councilmembers, thank you so much for having these meetings. I'm a newer resident to South Bend at 803 West Washington. My name is Stephen Ziegler and I have a much lighter note to share with you today, just my support for your future meetings. You'll be considering the Near West Neighborhood Plan and the, the team at the city has done such a marvelous job of listening to the, the residents and going through a whole process. I stayed in town just for this meeting to speak to you and give my support to that plan. I think it is wonderful. I'm appreciative of the whole team doing that. I know we've got bigger issues, but I just wanted to say thank you and please consider that plan. I thought it was just wonderful and it will do great things for our city. I've moved here full-time to make the city a better place and appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Clerk Jones, is there anyone online that wishes to have privilege of the floor?
I don't see anyone in the virtual audience that has expressed an interest to speak on public up floor.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman White?
I just want to make a comment. It's gotten so bad that the neighbors over in that area, they have put the mattresses in front of their windows and their doors. And couches, mm-hmm, yeah. They turned them upside down and to have some type of, you know, coverage and safety. But I do appreciate the, the police department. They've done an amazing job. But it is a major concern.
Well, it's, it's terrible when you can't sit in your own home and watch TV or sleep or any of the things that normal people do in their home. So I thank them for coming and, and expressing their concern, which it's a concern for everyone. And our police department is stretched then. I think to say the gang task force is great and what they'll say is probably they don't have the people to man it. So I think once they get up to, to a full force, that you may see something. I mean, I'm, but until those numbers come up, I just, just don't see that happening. But I could be wrong. I don't want to speak for the police department, but I understand your concern. I live right, right in your, not too far from you guys, so I know exactly what you're talking about. Is there anybody else that wishes to make any comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we are officially adjourned.